Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Special Meeting of Council, Tuesday, the 25th of October 2025, commencing at 5:30. Nala, karak nuangamot, kan karak ninja buja. We acknowledge the Nuang people as the traditional custodians of the lands in which we meet. Announcements by the President. I'd like to give you just a brief little overview of a little election that we had recently. We had quite a good turnout. We had 40.9% of the 3,644 electors, which totaled out to 1,490 votes in total. Seven of those were informal, which is not too bad. We had two vacancies for our urban ward that were filled by our two nominations in councillor Tempa and councillor Decampo. Both elected unopposed for a four-year term. Our rural ward saw councillor Jenny Wilcox elected first with a four-year term. Councillor Julie Batink elected second at a four-year term. Councillor Andy Burns elected third as a two-year term. And councillor Braden Danielli elected fourth with a two-year term. I welcome you all, welcome all of our new and returning councillors. We have a lot of work to do. I hope you've got your working hats on. The next mission by council is to elect a deputy. So I would like to call for nominations for the position of the Deputy Shire President, which I believe have been given to the CEO.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two nominations, one from Mr Steve, or councillor Mylan, and one from Mr councillor Wade Decampo.
Thank you. So I believe the next order is that we draw the names out to decide the ballot order and the speaking order? Thank you.
Would you like to do the honour?
Sure!
Sounds like a lot of noise, but there's only two.
And these are described as a uniform cylindrical...
Spherical...
Spherical... Knowledge. Oh, it's like getting a Kinder Surprise or something. Councillor Decampo will be. You are first on the ballot and you speak first. Just to make sure the other one does say councillor Mylan, which it does. Excellent. Okay, candidates to address council. Councillor Decampo, is there a time limit? We need to give him a time limit? Is there a time limit?
Six minutes.
Six minutes? Yeah, I think that's probably... So councillor Mylan, I'll ask you to retire to the JC Rose Room. And councillor Decampo, if you would like to address council for a maximum of six minutes.
I won't need six minutes, Madam President, but thank you for that kind and generous offer. I think, I really believe in the democratic process. And we saw that with three new councillors elected out of seven. And congratulations to all of you, including councillor Wilcox for being re-elected on Saturday. And of course to councillor Tempa being re-elected. As part of the democratic process, we choose our leadership. And it's always good to have another option for the leadership of the group. The mayor or the president gets elected every four years. And of course, the deputy gets elected every two years. And we may be up in two years' time if the government has its way and goes to elections every four years with compulsory voting. I have, I think, a vast amount of knowledge and experience that I can support our president with. And that's really the key to the deputy is supporting the president in the various groups and roles that she may do when you're required. The deputy president's certainly not something that takes any limelight or any glamour away from the council or the president. But it is somebody that has the ability to stand up and to represent the council and the president at any group you do go to. And it's fair to say that our president's done a wonderful job over the last two years. Aided the role that she has done. She's developed relationships and is wanting to develop them further. And I'm sure that there'll be a nomination potentially for a higher position in other bodies that she sits on, which will require the deputy to come up. Now, when I first got into this council, I had hair. I had small children and now I've got small grandchildren. So I've grown through my life and I've also grown with this council. I've also grown, I think, in maturity. And I think it is now time for me to put my hat back in the ring for deputy, to be able to use that experience long-term. There are people, though, that we're not just the only ones around the room. This decision actually should take into account everyone within the Shire. What we deal with here today and tonight and next week and every four weeks thereafter for the next two years is, at every meeting, is people's money, people's livelihood, and making people's lives easier within the Shire. And I think that we forget that from time to time, that the reality is, is we're not dealing with our money. So when we talk about grants for off-road vehicle tracks and various other things, and we say it's, you know, £56,000 for that and £50,000 for that, and we've got £992,000 for that, that's not our money. We are custodians of other people's money. And to ensure that we deliver value for money for our ratepayers, we need to have good leadership and strong leadership. That includes potentially me, and I will take this mantle, as becoming the surrogate councillor for Pemberton, even though I'm an urban ward councillor, because Pemberton missed out on a council representative due to the changes to the electoral boundaries within the Shire. So there are other communities that we have to, as we were sworn in, we know that we have to represent. And I've been able to do that, I think, without fear or favour, probably to some detriment in the past. I remember many, many years ago when we upgraded this Pemberton Main Street and we took $650,000 off Pemberton one year and gave it to management up to finish its main street project. I was nearly hung in the streets of Pemberton for a year or two. But what they didn't realise is that we gave them a lot more money down the road. And that's good planning, and it always takes good planning, and I think good leadership can do that. So I ask you for your support tonight as deputy. I will serve you faithfully. And the deputy is, again, just remember to support the president, who is doing a fantastic job. She is highlighting the Shire of Management up in the state government circles. She is certainly elevating herself and us within groups like the Zone, the South West Zone, and other groups that she participates for in our behalf. And as we saw again tonight, when we saw £117,000, I think it was, £114,000 and change for the Warren Blackwood Alliance of Councils, there is significant amount of investment into other groups that we also have courage for. And it's very important that we remember that it's not just this chamber and our own Shire that we actually serve and that we are masters to. So I ask you for your support tonight as deputy. And thank you for having, it took less than six minutes, I think, so thank you.
So six minutes, councillor?
Madam President, thanks for the opportunity, and fellow councillors, to present my case to you to why I think I should be the deputy president of this wonderful Shire of ours. It's a Shire that I, as I explained when I stood up before, came down to live in when I was 21 and accidentally ended up staying. And really, I think what made my wife and I end up staying and raising our family here was the people and the place. And I think that's what's really, our Shire has really going for it. It's, I've always thought it's a very egalitarian place to live. People mix in from all sorts of walks of life. And in my role at the school for so many years, I was so fortunate to meet the families and such a diverse range of families. And families coming to a regional school from down at Northcliffe or Pemberton. We may have had some students from Warpole back in the day. And what always impressed me, and I always made an effort to really do, was to understand the aspirations of those families and their children. And they're wide and varied. And I think that growing up in this area, I've seen so many people with so many different opportunities and go off in all sorts of directions, but often come back and they still call this region their home. I mean, the other reason obviously was the environment where we wanted to be. And I think that's an important role for our Shire is to facilitate the growth, the development of the beautiful places that we have and to continue to foster it as a place where people want to come and live, because we do need people to come here. And obviously, as all the things we've spoken about today, housing, affordability, facilities like schools and hospitals, access to clean water and electricity, all those things are things we need to advocate for. And as I've been the deputy president for the last two years, being able to do that, I mean, the work of our president is, I think, fabulous and highly respected in our community, wherever I sort of go, to the range of people that I speak with. And the advocacy through that Warren Blackwood Alliance, and her work on that too, and in general, has been one about building relationships. And I think that her approach and my approach are probably, you know, whilst they'll be different in some ways, is about the importance of relationships. And when we're advocating for our Shire, we need to build relationships with those who we're advocating for. Okay, we need to sometimes adopt an adversarial approach as well. But I think that's better if that comes from our citizens and the people that live here. If we can get support from them for the changes that we need, that's where outside political groups stand up and listen. Look, my leadership style is more about getting the balance of challenge and support right. I think that matches where our Shire is really going. I've seen a big change just in a couple of years in the way that our Shire office has been led by our CEO to adopt a stance where they're open to change, they're not defensive. They're encouraged to look for new ideas and not see mistakes or criticism as a negative, but as an opportunity to let's, what can we do different? So I really reckon we're on the right track there. The other thing that I really endorse with our work is our strategic responsiveness. So whilst we have to respond to urgent things, like pot holes or something that breaks down, that's important to be flexible and have that agility. But I can see like strategic planning for, for instance, the advocacy plan for the Pemberton bill. That's a fabulous way to sort of outline and articulate, this is how we're going about doing this kind of work, rather than randomly sort of jumping into different things. The plan for Windy Harbour, not just the seaweed one, but the setting of those strategic directions so that we know that when we're making decisions, it's actually going somewhere. So we get to the point where we're not just responding to, you know, crises. And that's the direction, I think, the asset reserve push that we've got, where we're really looking at. What are, look at our assets, where are we at? What are they worth? What do we divest? What could we continue to support and what do we need to, you know, change? So all those things, I think, are important. I mean, I've been on the Regional Roads Group as a proxy a couple of times and also attended, just as an observer, to, because I think it's such an important area of funding for us. And I'd like to continue to be able to do that, that Regional Road Group's critical. And I've also been to a couple of the meetings of the Zone. So, look, I think I've grown in the role, I've learned a hell of a lot in two years, and I've always got a lot more to learn. A big objective of mine is to make sure that any of the new councillors get an opportunity to have their say and we can really, you know, get you guys involved, because it's very easy for the experienced ones to sort of dominate the discussion. So hopefully, if there's anything we can do to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Mylan. Can you just give councillor Decampo the heads up? Councillors, there's some ballots coming around. Thank you. Obviously, one for first, two for second. Thank you. Or you could just do one if you'd like. Think we can work out who the second one was?
It is optional preferential voting, actually, so.
It's the world's smallest squares.
Give me one moment.
Do you want me to tell you a joke? So there was these two fish swimming up a stream. And one, they got to the top of the stream and they banged into a concrete wall. And one fish turned to the other fish and went, damn! Oh, the calibre of our councillors! He's counting! Do you need a drum roll?
No, I just need the verification.
Okay. I feel there'll be people watching live stream going, is the sound on? Like, I can't hear anything. Tell another joke. That's my only joke, I don't know any other jokes.
Okay, Madam President, may I declare the result?
Thank you, sir.
Councillor Decampo has received three votes. Councillor Mylan has received one, two, three, four, five, six votes.
And there were no, and no informals? No informals? Excellent. Councillor Mylan, you've saved us a fortune getting your nameplate redone. You can take the white sleeve off and you can return as deputy. Because you're just a councillor. Yep, so that's this one, this is him. Yep. Okay, so item 2.2.5, election of the Deputy Shire President for a two-year term. We are voted by secret ballot to councillor Mylan, six to three to councillor Decampo. Councillor Mylan becoming the Deputy Shire President. Councillor Mylan, I just need you to make a declaration in the prescribed form, please.
Thanks, Madam President. Hi, Stephen James Mylan of Tynan's Road RD. Having been elected to the office of Deputy President of the Shire of Manjuma, declare that I will take the office upon myself and will duly, faithfully, honestly, and with integrity fulfil the duties of the office for the people in the district according to the best of my judgment and ability. And will observe the code of conduct adopted by the Shire of Manjuma under section 5.104 of the Local Government Act 1995.
Excellent, thank you, councillor. Slowly. Thank you. Item three is attendance, 3.1, there are apologies, we have nil. 3.2, approved leave of absence, there is nil. Item four, declarations of interest?
Follow that one, Madam President. I have one declaration of interest, it's an impartiality interest from councillor Danielli. Pronunciations? Thank you. In relation to agenda item 6.16.1, which relates to appointment of bushfire advisory committee. And the councillor has advised that he has a close personal family contact with the coastal zone representative recommended in the recommendation. So just for a very quick recap, because that's an impartiality interest, the councillor can stay, can take part in the meeting, doesn't have to leave the room.
Thank you. Section five, public question time. Section 5.1, response to public questions taken on notice, there are nil. Section 5.2, public question time. If there is anyone from the gallery that would like to relate matters to matters only on this agenda? Thank you, sir, if you would like to go to the lectern, if you could let us know your name and address. And you have three minutes. Thank you very much.
My name's Cliff Winfield. I just would like to congratulate all of the returning and elected members. In my experience, this looks to be a very balanced and experienced council, led by a fantastic Shire president. And I congratulate Steve on being re-elected. And I hope that there's someone to join Steve and Jenny in a bottle of red wine now that I'm left. So carry on as though I'm not here, because I'm not. Oh, one more. And I had to come back to say goodbye to Jade because she wasn't at Northcliffe.
Thank you, former councillor Winfield. If you didn't know, Cliff was one of our former councillors. Any other questions from the gallery? Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, section six, officers' reports. We only have four to consider tonight. We'll go down to 6.16.1, appointments to the bushfire advisory committee?
My suggestion is you suspend standing orders whilst you consider all three.
All three, not?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, now?
Yeah.
All right, I move that we suspend standing orders. Is there a second, councillor Decampo? All those in favour? Thank you, carried nine, zero. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr CEO.
Thank you, Madam President. So what councillor Darren has just moved and has been seconded and approved is to suspend standing orders, which just means that there's an opportunity for the councillors to have a little bit more of a free-flowing conversation and you're not stuck in the moving, seconding, you can only speak for this amount of time. Once the nine of you have worked out roughly where you think the membership and all the committees are going to go, we will resume standing orders, well, you will resume standing orders, and we'll head back into the formal voting process. This just sort of helps things along a little bit.
You'll get used to that by the fourth item, because we'll probably keep doing that on the way through. Councillor, are we going to do all, can we do all four? Can we organise all four and then come back into standing? Is that what you're just doing? Sorry. Okay, let's go. Righto, so can we start with bushfire, the bushfire advisory committee? So we need two councillors, one as the presiding member, one as the deputy. I am happy to be the presiding member if no one else wants to be. Jen, so these are held in Manjuma at about 7.30 at night, that runs through till about 11. Yep, fab. Okay. The Chief Executive Officer Review Advisory Committee. So along with myself, we need three other councillors, minimum of three other councillors, plus a couple of proxies.
A minimum of two additional, but up to...
Oh, yep, well, I've got three. So councillor Tempa, councillor Mylan, councillor Decampo. Councillor Batink as one of the proxies. And councillor Darren, thank you.
Just for clarification, if we have more members, would you want to join on the break?
Yeah. And Decampo, okay. And the deputy? Steve? Or Heidi? Yep. Yep, for the Chief Executive Review. Are you happy for Heidi to do it? Okay, well, they both want to do it, so how do we do this? Okay, yep. Hi, HT, okay, so me as the presiding member, councillor Tempa as the deputy? Happy with that? Fabulous. Audit and risk? Councillor Darren? Audit and risk? Councillor Danielle? Danielli? And Batink? Proxy? Councillor Mylan? We can have one more? Do you want to go as a member? Yep. And two proxies? For the audit and risk? And councillor Burns? And final proxy? Okay, presiding member, guess that's me. Deputy, presiding member? Mylan? Fabulous, thank you. Local emergency is just for noting, so that'll be myself and Deputy Shire President, councillor Mylan. Fabulous, thank you, councillor Darren.
I move that we come, or we resume standing orders.
Thank you, second, councillor Decampo, all those in favour? Carried nine, zero, thank you. Councillor Darren? Did you, so we go one by one, so we'll go back to 6.16.1, appointments at the bushfire advisory committee?
Okay, I'll move as per the officer's recommendation with the following conclusions, that the councillor... that the councillor representative be councillor Donnell Buie and, and the proxy be councillor Jennifer Wilcox. And with the further changes of the coastal zone Northcliffe, uh, representative be Peter Hill and the coastal zone proxy to be Mark Battie. And two, appoint councillor Donnell Buie as the presiding member of the bushfire advisory committee. And three, appoint Jennifer Wilcox as the deputy presiding member of the bushfire advisory committee.
Thank you. Did you want to, you don't want to, did you want to speak to that at all councillor de Campo? Did you want to speak to it? Are there any other speakers? Can we put that to the vote, please councillors? All those in favour? Carried nine-zero, thank you. Sixteen-point-sixteen-point, uh, six-point-sixteen-point-two, appointments to the chief executive officer review advisory committee. Mover? Councillor Darren?
Uh, I move that council appoint the following council members to the chief executive officer review advisory committee for the biannual period twenty-first of October twenty-twenty-five to the sixteenth of October twenty-twenty-seven. Shire president, Donnell Buie, councillor Tempa, councillor de Campo, councillor Mylan, first proxy councillor Batink and second proxy councillor Darren. Two, appoint councillor Donnell Buie as the presiding member of the chief executive officer review advisory committee. And three, appoint councillor Heidi Tempa as the deputy presiding member of the chief executive officer review advisory committee.
Excellent. Is there a seconder? Councillor Danny- Daniele? It's going to take me a bit to get used to that break in, sorry. Uh, councillor Darren, did you want to speak to the motion? Councillor Daniele, you're right. Um, all those in fa- can we put that to the vote, please councillors? All those in favour? Carried nine-zero, thank you. Six-point-sixteen-point-three, appointments to the audit and risk management advisory committee. Councillor Darren?
I wrote it down. Uh, I move that council appoint the following council members to the audit and risk management advisory committee for the biannual period twenty-one October twenty-twenty-five to sixteen October twenty-twenty-seven. Counts, uh, Shire president, Donnell Buie, councillor Darren, councillor Batink, councillor Daniele, councillor Mylan, ca- uh, first proxy councillor Burns and second proxy councillor de Campo. Two, appoint councillor Donnell Buie as presiding member to the, of the audit and risk management advisory committee. And three, appoint councillor Steve Mylan as deputy presiding member of the audit and risk management advisory committee.
Excellent. Is there a seconder? Councillor Burns? Councillor Darren, did you want to speak to the motion? Councillor Burns, did you want to speak to the motion? Can we put it to the, uh, the vote, please councillors? All those in favour? Carried nine-zero, thank you. Six-point-sixteen-point-four, appointments to the local emergency management committee. Oh, councillor Darren?
I'll move as per officers' recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Burns? Councillor Darren, did you want to speak to the motion? Councillor Burns, did you want to speak to the motion? Excellent. Can we put that to the vote, please councillors? All those in favour? Carried nine-zero, thank you. Okay, um, applications for leave of absence?
Yes, Madam President, could I apply for a leave of absence for the next meeting, which is Tuesday the twenty-eighth? Thank you.
Um, would someone like to move that? Thank you.
I could alternatively do it via...
No, I'm not approving that, because I'm not approving it. Uh, councillor Mylan, uh, can we put that to the vote, please? Count, oh, is there a seconder? Councillor Darren, can we put it to the vote, please councillors? All those in favour of allowing councillor de Campo to miss the first official council meeting? That's, uh, move nine-zero, thanks very much. Okay. Oh, look at that. There being no further business to discuss, I wish to thank those in attendance and congratulate you once again for putting your hand up to represent your communities and close the meeting at six-oh-two.